Julie Dandrio, present. Susan Moore is absent. Shanda Olmstead is absent. And Melidia Payne is absent. Harold Winkert?
Yes.
We and Shanda just are here.
So, oh, it looks like...
Looky there.
Okay, Shanda Olmstead and Melidia Payne are just joining us. So, we will go ahead and begin this meeting with six board members present. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. That passes 6-0. So, the first item up for this evening is the Title IX policy update. Dr. Cobs?
So, the Title IX, Dean could move down to G-A-A-B. Actually, there is a page right here at the front, that right there. So, is a great, just kind of overview of what is happening here. There was a great deal of conversation about Title IX laws over the summer explicitly as they relate to sexual harassment and discrimination. And a number of things changed within Title IX that ultimately led to the laws being implemented as of August 14th. Typically, when we go through these things, we have a day of reading the policies. We have two weeks to kind of overview them. And then, we come back and approve the policies. There really isn't that opportunity here. The policies that are in place are in law. So, the update here is just about making sure that our policies match what the law is. The law went into effect on August 14th. The crux of this is that anybody who has a complaint of discrimination or a complaint of sexual harassment or discrimination based upon sexual harassment, or vice versa, there has to be a method in which you go through the investigation process. There is a commissioner, so to speak, of Title IX. That will be me. I go through my training later this week. And ultimately, all of those investigative issues come through me to make sure that every discriminatory issue and every sexual harassment issue is met with the appropriate level of need that we can provide. So, I think the issue was that the law or those governing the law maybe felt like some of these things were not being addressed the way that they should be. And so, subsequently, there are some things that are coming into place that force us to really begin to take a look at it. Dean, if you would scroll all the way down, there is something called KN that is a complaint form. And it'll be all the way towards the back of this document. So, you get through eighty-some odd pages here.
You can scroll.
We may have gone too far. There it is, right there. So, this is what the form looks like. And so, any situation of claimed or alleged discrimination or sexual harassment would have to be documented within this form, as well as how we follow up and address the determination of the district and the following recommendations for action. So, Title IX has really changed the manner in which these processes are governed. I think that our district has worked very hard to try to make sure that any issues of discrimination, those types of things, are addressed. I don't believe that we've had discriminatory...well, I shouldn't say that. We've certainly had discriminatory issues. And I think that our buildings have tried to handle those in the best way possible. But there is now documentation that has to be very formulative in the way that we move forward with it from this point forward. That training will occur, like I said, this week. And then, we'll begin to train our administrative staff. Then, all staff have to be trained as well each year, much like many of the other acts that have come into place. We'll also have to make sure that we have conversations with our students at all levels about discrimination and sexual harassment and how they work through those things within our system, should they occur. Any questions about what we're approving tonight or asking to approve? There are four policies. Policy G-A-A-B, G-A-A-C, J-G-E-C, K-N, and then, the complaint form, which is the K-N complaint form. In essence, what they are is the discriminatory policy, the sexual harassment policy, on both the teacher's side and the student's side, and updating our policies to meet current law.
I saw there's something in there. I just had it...just wondering what it...when the last time we had this? There was some language in there, too, about foreign exchange students. When's the last time we even had one?
We've had foreign exchange students...I don't remember the last one that we had. We had one last fall. But we have had foreign exchange students. This piece is different and not what we're talking about tonight. It will come in the next policies, and we'll go through what all those things mean.
Thanks, I was just curious.
Any other questions for Dr. Cobs? All right, would somebody like to make a motion to approve these policies?
Madam President?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the policies as read.
Is there a second call?
Second.
Okay, so, it was moved by Chris Cunningham and seconded by Melidia Payne that we approve policy G-A-A-B, G-A-A-C, J-G-E-C, K-N, and the K-N complaint form to address the new Title IX statute. We'll do a roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio?
Yes.
Susan Moore?
Yes.
Shanda Olmstead?
Yes.
Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Harold Winkert?
Yes.
And that passes 7-0. And we are down to the next section, which is reports and presentations. Dr. Cobs has a presentation on our budget.
Okay, Dean, we're going to look at Form 150 first. Okay, this...so, again, I want to make sure that we all recognize that what we're talking about here today is your local or your maximum authority to spend. It is not how much money that you have, nor is it how you derive the expenditures. It is simply, in the budget process, this is the formula that you go through to determine your maximum authority. If you have more students or more waitings than you initially described here in this formula, you have to go back and republish the budget to provide more authority to spend those dollars. If not, basically, you give them back to the state. So, remember that we will not know exactly the numbers that should fill in here until September 20th, and then furthermore, until the audit comes down the road when we determine these things. Okay? So, what we're doing at this point is ensuring for the processes of the budgets all around the state of Kansas that the local authority for us to spend meets the requirements the state provides. So, I've been asked to kind of walk through...this is the guideline. Form 150 is the guideline for state budgets. It is a formulaic process, right? It doesn't pick some numbers and put them in here to get the budget you want. It's very systematic in its approach and the way that it occurs. So, when people are confused as to how school budgets work, hopefully, after tonight, you can explain to them it's nearly as complicated as they all think. Okay? So, this number right here, the first...ooh, let me turn this on real quick, so I get the little green button. This number right here, that is your audited number for enrollment, right? And so, one of the things, if you remember, the legal process that we went through when the state was being sued by schools over funding. Part of the issue was that the funding, you never knew what your funding was because it was always based upon that year's enrollment. So, you were making guesses about what your enrollment was, and then, you'd show up on September 20th, and you'd either be up or down or whatever. So, they wanted a consistent approach in terms of how that occurred. What they did in this process was give you last year's enrollment numbers or the second preceding year of enrollment numbers. So, the reason that they offer the second preceding year is so that if you have declining enrollment, you have a longer period of time to overcome the debt that's going to come from not having the dollars that you had had previous. So, if you know that you're going to be down 100 students, you can go second preceding year of enrollment, and you can begin to filter out how you're going to address your enrollment issues. If that one year is an anomaly, then you can skip it and use your second preceding year enrollment, get your numbers where they're supposed to be, have the one year in which numbers are down, not use it, and get to the preceding year's enrollment. Okay? So, there's lots of conversations about how COVID-19 is going to address or going to impact budgets overall. Currently, this number for us is 18-19 numbers. So, we are on second preceding year enrollment, in part because we continue to see a decline in enrollment, which is a conversation we've had this board multiple times. If our enrollment numbers are down based upon this year with COVID-19, next year, we will most likely be utilizing 19-20 enrollment numbers. If this year is an anomaly for us and we are way low, the following year, we could choose not to use 19-20 numbers, and we can use 20-21 numbers. And we can skip this year as a whole. Okay? So, we always have kind of a year gap in there that we can make decisions about which year is going to give us the highest authority in terms of our FTE. That is why they did this, so that schools have some wiggle room in terms of their budgets and making sure that a one-year anomaly is not going to impact them adversely. Okay? So, if you actually look through this, on the back of this, you can see Table 1. It will walk you through the processes in determining whether or not you should use preceding year, second preceding year, or how you should move forward, right? And you can go back and look there, and you can see that the numbers that were driven in, we were not crazy far off, right? 234 and 920 of 18, 2342 and 2017. So, we're actually using 17...I think I said 18-19. We're actually using 17-18 numbers. Okay? So, that is the number. That is where 2,334.5 comes in on that value. Right? Yeah, it's the 18 numbers. Okay? So, yeah, I said 17-18. That just gives you, that's the one you can't use. So, you saw 18-19, 19-20. Those are the numbers we get to choose from. You also have your at-risk numbers, okay? So, everything on this side of your document is FTE, okay? These are not dollar values until if Dean...yeah. So, your...scroll back up there for me, right? So, these are all FTE. Okay, keep scrolling up. These are all FTE. Okay? So, you'll see one place down here where it's actually in dollars, right? And that's the only one where it's in dollars. Everything else is a state number, is an identified number or full-time equivalency that is then multiplied by the base state aid per pupil, okay? So, for four-year-old at-risk, which is right here, you see that we count as .5 FTE. So, we're indicating that we believe that on 920 of 21, we will have 38 students that will meet the criterion to be labeled at-risk. Okay? So, the big number up here, second preceding year, we get back to this year's values and everything else. Okay? The next one is simply an addition of lines 1 and 2. Okay, so, we get to, right now, our FTE is 2,353 and 1/2 students. So, there's the next piece, if you look at Table 2. This is where you get into weighted enrollment, and this is where schools with less volumes of students get a weighting that maybe others don't, because it's more costly to educate students in small schools than it is large schools. Okay? So, there's a weighting piece that goes along with this. If you look at Table 2, you can tell your enrollment by district. If you are 1,622 students or over, you have a factor of this value right here. If you're under that, your factors are weighted above that. So, we know that our factor is this value. If Dean scrolls back up, you will see...keep going. You will see right there that we take our number from line 3, we multiply by that factor, and we get an additional 82 and 1/2 FTE. Okay? Those are not our students. This is weighted enrollment, right? But we get paid for an additional, basically, 83 students. We also have bilingual weighting, okay? And we get a choice here. Do we get paid for those students by the hour or by headcount? And there are two values that come out, and we get to choose the greater of the two values. So, in this case, if you see what we get by contact hours, we basically at 1.2 FTE. But if we do by headcount, because we continue to have increasing volumes of ELL students, we actually get to 5.4 FTE. We take the larger of the two values, that number goes right there for an extra, basically, 5 and 1/2 FTE. Okay? Line 6 gets to career and technical education. We get paid because it costs more money to host a career and technical education program than it does what they would consider a normal classroom. Okay? So, this is the importance of determining pathways and those classes that are weighted within the pathways. It's also why it's important for us to address how the scheduling works, so that our funded classes take place first semester, and our non-funded classes take place second semester. All of these values are driven off of a September 20 headcount. So, if we have more non-funded classes in the first semester, we lose money on career and technical education weighting. So, what this indicates is that on any given day, we have 745 hours of career and technical education taking place in a funded course on any given day. We take that, we divide it by 6, multiply it by .5, and we get an additional 62.1 FTE. Again, these are not additional students, but we get more money because of the programs that we provide cost more to provide. Okay? The next piece is your free and reduced lunch. At this point, we have 991 students that we're identifying that will be free lunch. Reduced, we get no dollars for. The only thing that counts is free. So, constantly, people talk about free and reduced. Really, the only reason that we identify free and reduced is when we talk about socioeconomic status and how the data aligns to SES. In terms of funding, the only thing that matters is students who are identified as free. Okay? So, of those free students, we get 991. We multiply that by the multiplier, and we gain an additional almost 480 FTE because of the socioeconomic status of our community. Okay? The next line is high-density at-risk. So, this is the same type of thing. If Dean would scroll down to Table 5... Yeah. So, you can see right here, and again, it's formulaic in nature. So, you take your headcount, which we knew, your number of students that are free and reduced, and there's a formula over here that you can begin to identify your percentage based upon, and you gain additional at-risk waitings. So, not only do you get dollars for free students, you also get additional dollars for high-density at-risk. And in this particular case, it's another 44 and 1/2 FTE. We have new facilities waiting, okay? So, at the end this year, I believe that it's just the Performing Arts Center and Garfield Preschool that we still get new facilities waiting. There's a formula that is associated here with the number of hours that are driven. We get the number of students that are in those places times a quarter for each one, and we get an additional 13 FTE off of that. Okay? Transportation waiting. Again, if you go to Table 3, this is where the fun really gets started. So, you have your entire district's square miles. We transport over 1...almost 116 square miles. That's nothing compared to West Franklin or Central Heights. They have, I think, like thousands of square miles. It's a lot, okay? We also have 525 kids who live outside of 2 and 1/2 miles from the flagpole of the school. Okay? So, whichever school they attend, if they live 2 and 1/2 miles outside, we can get funding for those kids. Okay? So, in this case, we get our 525 kids. There's this index density here, which doesn't mean a whole lot in this particular formula. What really matters is this 525 times this factor right here, giving us 383,250. Multiply that by your base, and you get $420,425 of additional transportation waiting. Okay? Now, you saw that as a dollar amount, right? Remember that on this page, nothing is in dollar amounts, right? So, you see this 420,425, it is divided by what is the base state aid per pupil. And so, what you get over here is this 92, which takes that dollar amount and makes it an FTE. So, $420,425 equates to 92 students. Okay? An additional 92 students. We don't have ancillary waitings. Estimated special ed waiting comes from a completely different account, okay? But again, we go to FTE. There's about $3 million of special ed waiting, and we get that number of FTE over there. We don't have anybody going to Fort Hays State this year, to their Math and Science Academy, so you don't have to worry about that. There is a virtual program. So, again, if Dean scrolls down to Table 4, one of the things you'll realize, which is an...up one right there, okay? One of the things you'll notice here is that virtual students, for whatever reason, have a higher FTE than normal students. Doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but if all of our kids were virtual kids, we'd get paid a lot more money. Maybe not the best way to explain it, but for whatever reason, virtual is that way. That number is coming down, though. So, you're seeing base state aid going up, you're seeing virtual numbers go down. It will not maintain its $5,000 place there for very long. Anyways, we have 14 full-time students in a virtual program at $5,000 apiece, right? And then, we have some part-time students at an additional cost. And then, we have people over 19, which would be our adults program, our adult learners' program, that they get a amount per credit. So, there's an additional $79,209 there. If you scroll back up to the formula, you will see that it is the only place where it remains in dollar amounts. I don't really know why. Maybe Terry knows why. But I believe that part of that is because KSDE, I think, has an aversion to virtual programming, and they don't want it to look like everything else. So, would you agree? I think that's exactly what it is. Okay? So, what you get here as you go through this is that you identify lines 313, which is all of these values, right? All of your FTE. In this case, we have 3,784.9 FTE. That is a far cry from the 2,200, 2,300 students that are enrolled, right? So, you can see from an FTE standpoint, that's about an extra 1,500, 1,600 students based upon waitings of some sort. Take that number, times the base state aid per pupil this year, which is 4,569, plus your virtual dollars, and you get our authority to spend, which is $17,372,417. Okay? If we had a cost of living index, we would add it and get a new value here. We do not. The last piece of this is that your LOB is funded a little bit differently, and it's determined differently. So, there's a formula that goes along this that would give us this value, which then gives us the percentage for what our LOB can be, our maximum LOB. Okay? So, it's a little bit different. This is your legal authority to spend. Okay? That's Form 150. That is, in a nutshell, how school, what they would...what people consider to be a budget, it's not really a budget, it's your authority to spend. That is how it is derived, okay? Remember that your authority to spend is always going to be more money than you actually get, right? So, the budgeting process comes later, when you determine how dollars should be allocated to different things. So, one of the questions that was asked was a comparison. So, Dean, if you'd pull up the comparison to 1920. So, this is your budget authority versus actual expenditures, okay? So, in 1920, you saw that our authority was $17,364. Our expenditures only totaled 16.7. So, this is a pretty good indication that we had authority to spend more money than we actually brought in, which is why it's important for us to have people like Terry that keep us grounded, where knowing where money is at, right? So, you can begin to realize that, one, remember that you don't want to...you can't carry over funds just to save for a rainy day. Every dollar from the state has to be allocated to something. If not, you basically give it back. So, this is where transfers to textbooks and those things come in handy at the end of the year to make sure that every dollar that was presented to us in terms of our budget is identified and allocated to some piece of the expenditure process. And some of those places, we can hold that money. Textbooks would be one, so you don't have to zero out that budget every year. But our general fund has to be zeroed out. Every dollar has to be accounted for all the way down to zero every year. Okay? That is it in a nutshell. The other items are ancillary items. You can look at your budget at a glance. Terry made some budget notes there if you're interested, and then, the notice of hearing. But what we're looking at today is the legal maximum authority to spend based upon the process that we just utilized. Okay? I think it's important to recognize that this process, if you look at the budget at a glance, does have our LOB at 33%, right? It still has a reduction in mill levy of almost a full point, I think .85. Budget is looking really good. So, a lot of good things happening in our district based upon budgets. Chris, you have a question?
Yeah. So, on line 18 of the Form 150, us changing where we went from our LOB to 33 from 31, did...I'm just curious how much that helped us on line 18?
You know, that's probably a better question for Terry. Do you know right off the top of your head?
Basically, the 17,415,243, that's the general fund used to compute LOB. So, basically, you just multiply it by either a .30 or a .33, and it's sort of a difference.
Yeah. So, you're talking about a 3% increase off of 17.4 million.
Okay.
I think, actually, I think that's...
Pretty substantial.
And that LOB, by us going...
329,000.
Yep. By raising 3%.
Yeah.
And that was based back on...because I know there was this mindset amongst some of us even, that raising that to 33 was actually raising mills, but it wasn't. It was more of a share thing with the state, correct?
So, not...the LOB is like revenue sharing, right? So, because Olathe has a broader tax base than we do, a mill in Olathe means a heck of a lot more than it does in Ottawa, just like a mill in Ottawa means a heck of a lot more than it does in West Franklin, right? It's not to try to be negative about it, but it's just the way that the system works and the assessed valuation is what it is. So, the local option budget was intended, and part of what the lawsuit indicated was that the local option budget had to be equalized throughout the state. Therefore, when that LOB occurs, the places that draw in higher tax dollars share that revenue with lower tax entities so that they can be consistent across the board, that everybody's LOB can remain a particular percentage of their overall base, right? So, that's why it works. Not all of that money's coming out of our tax base. But the other side of it that was a benefit to us was that we can increase the LOB, draw from other entities' tax base, change around where our mills were at in terms of what we saw in a reduction of our bond and interest. So, we saw some of those things come down, move some mills over to what would be the LOB to not have an impact upon taxpayers, and still reduce the overall mill levy for our community. So, not only did we increase revenue with most of it coming from outside of our county for our schools, but we also decreased the mill levy overall for our taxpayers.
One follow-up question. So, that taxes, is that sales tax and property tax on the profit sharing?
I actually think it's just property tax. Just property tax.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions for Dr. Cobs?
I had a question from what Chris asked. What was the mill levy before the bond was passed?
We...I don't know the exact numbers. The bond increased the mill levy, I think, 5.2. The bond increased the mill levy, I think, 5.4 mills or something like that.
That's a good question.
Yeah, the, I think it was like, I think it was like a five-mill increase to do the bond.
Through refinancing, basically, is the whole reason why we're getting the point...
Yes.
Almost one point, at most.
Yeah, so I don't know exactly what the mill levy was prior to the bond. I know that we had a huge bond for a very minimal mill increase. I want to say it was like five mills, but I can't remember off the top of my head. Six years ago.
Any other questions for Dr. Cobb's?
One more. Is there any way that we'll be able to possibly refinance again? The only reason I say this is there's, on the residential side, I know like ours, we just got an opportunity to go to 2 and 1/2%, and I just see that those numbers just keep coming down unbelievably. I didn't think they would keep coming down more and more.
Yeah, so Greg sent us some information late last month. I don't know that refinancing on our current bonds, that we just refinanced, is going to do us a whole lot of good in the long term. But some of those bonds that were wrapped up that we didn't refinance because of how they were, how they were positioned within the bond are now capable of being refinanced. I think that they're changing some laws and allowing some things to happen that weren't allowed previously. If that were to be the case, I think that he indicated that there was like another, a possibility of another $650,000 or something like that. Is that what you remember? It was something like that. There was some value, substantial value, that if we refinanced those bonds that were not allowable to refinance in the last one, that we still had some money that we could capture. There has to be some approval, some legal changes in order for that to happen. I don't believe that that's happened as of yet. So identifying exactly what that value would be is tough, but certainly, there's some money to capture there should those laws change.
But I think the key thing to do is point out that we're nearly, when the dust settles with moving the money around, where .8 mills or nearly one mill decrease...
Yes.
...in overall impact to the taxpayer.
Yeah.
And I think that's what's great is, in this time of uncertainty, we're still able to lower our ultimate mill levy to the taxpayers.
Absolutely.
Susan, did you have something else?
Yes, and the other thing is, if, when you look at these graphs, because I like pictures, you'll see that all of, I mean, the bulk of our money is going towards instruction and student support. It's not in buildings, even though we've got this huge bond.
Yep.
And so I've always been really proud of our district for doing that because we could inflate administrative costs by hiring more whatevers to do that, but we've always tried to put it where we need to put it for the kids. And so I'm really proud of our district for that.
There was a document that came out towards the end of last year from KASB. It indicated that Ottawa was one of the highest, the districts that gave the most money to instruction in terms of the percentage of its budget. So that was something that we were very proud of. It's certainly something that we've worked very hard on to make sure that we drive instruction appropriately and fund instruction appropriately in our district. So it was good to see that it was being recognized. And it'll be something that we continue to work towards.
And what happens with that is, it's because of our flat administrative structure, that we don't add a lot of layers in, but so it's kind of a balance. Are they burned out or not? You know, so anyway, but I think it's a good thing.
Any other questions for Dr. Cobb's on the budget presentation?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Hopefully, walking through how that works is a benefit. We can have deeper conversations if anybody wants to sit in with me at some point in time. And really have budget 101.
To me the first time instead of that really long, long, long seminar that I went through. That was a great synopsis, much better. We will move on to Section 4.02, which is questions and comments from the district patrons on this budget. And I didn't receive any of those. Dean, is there any that I'm missing? Okay, all right, so we have none of those tonight. So we are ready to move down to 5.01, which is approval of the budget as presented, if somebody would like to make a motion.
Madam President? I'd like to make a motion that we approve the budget that was presented.
Second?
It was moved by Chris Cunningham and seconded by Linda Alderman that we approve the budget as presented. We'll do a roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio?
Yes.
Susan Moore?
Yes.
Shandel Olmsted?
Yes.
Melodya Payne?
Yes.
Harold Winger?
Yes.
And that passes 7-0. All right, and that's the last thing that we have on the agenda for tonight.
I think before we go, I don't know that we, that we give Terry enough credit for all the work that she does for our district. She's worked incredibly hard to make sure that we can do the things that we do, and she's fantastic with our finances. I just want to tell Terry how much I appreciate her help in making sure that we continue to toe the line in this district, provide great resources to our kids and to our staff, and still get to do more things than most districts do. The vast majority of that is because she can keep us all on the straight and narrow when we need to with our budgets. So I certainly want to appreciate Terry and let you all know how much work it takes and what she does every day to make sure that our district maintains a great position.
Thank you, I certainly agree with that, for sure. She does a lot, and we really do appreciate it. Thank you, Terry. All right, is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Second.
There are second.
Second.
All right, all in favor, raise your hand. That passes 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.